Good evening. We're gonna get this workshop started. Today's date is April 3rd, and the time is 5:37. Board workshops, we'll start off with budget presentations. Mr. Tony Ressa.
Do you mind if I move a little closer here?
You're in the shadows over there, sir.
I feel like I'm in England, and you guys are in the US.
Just say, "No money, we're adjourned."
I wish, I'd like to.
That'll save time.
I don't wanna get too close.
Sean Spicer, I like.
Alright, President Gara, Dr. Spinoza, members of the board. Tonight, we actually start our budget process. We've had one meeting where we discussed our budget calendar and our budget priorities. But really, this is the start of the budget process that will culminate in the adoption of the tax rate in August. We'll adopt the budget in June, and we'll go ahead and present the tax rate and ask for your approval in August, the August board meeting. So what we're gonna discuss tonight is we'll go over primarily the general fund for the school district. We'll talk about our revenue estimates and our assumptions that we're making, and how we derive those particular estimates. We'll look at the state funding formula. I know it's not exactly a lot of fun, but I think once a year, it's important to kinda go over some of those major categories and some of the factors that go into our state revenues. We'll talk about the Commission of Public School Finance that was created by the legislature. We'll talk about the cost drivers for the general fund, the preliminary budget by function, and then we'll talk about the April 24th budget agenda. So, when we talk about the revenues in the general fund, primarily, we're looking at three areas. We're looking at local revenues, which is driven by our property tax collections. We're looking at our state funding. The primary fund is the foundation school program, and then we're looking at federal funds. We're looking at SHARs, our indirect costs, and our impact data. And what you have there is our percentages and what we're projecting for 2019 on the general fund. State revenues are about 72 percent, local revenues are 26 percent, and about 2 percent for federal funds. So, when we look at our local funding, we look at, make certain assumptions, first of all, the tax rate and our property values. Our maintenance and operation tax rate is 98.16 cents. It's one of the lowest in the state, and we're not recommending an increase because of the fact that the voters were gracious enough of supporting the school district in adopting the 2017 bond election. So in that election, we told the voters that we would be going up about 10.6 cents in the interest and sinking part of the tax rate. So, given that factor, we're looking at the same tax rate that we had for the last seven years for maintenance and operations. We're looking also at our projected tax rolls. Our certified values are a little over $9 billion currently. We're projecting that our tax rolls will go up to $9.4 billion, the growth of about 5.05 percent from the prior year. Now again, I wanna remind the board that we're changing. I mean, these estimates are gonna change as we get more up-to-date information. So, later this month, we'll get our preliminary values from the central appraisal district, and then the end of July, we'll get our certified values. So, at that point, we'll have a pretty good idea of what those values are. We're making certain assumptions based on historical information. We're making the assumption that our tax collections will be at 99 percent of what's assessed, and then our yield per penny is about $948,000. So, what you have there is a table showing the growth in our certified property values. So it's about a 31 percent increase over the last 10 years, seven years maybe. So, $9 billion assessed certified values in 2017, 31 percent increase over 2010 when we had 6.84 percent. And that's a very healthy trend for the school district, which shows that we're growing. So, with respect to our state funding assumptions, we're looking at the fact, you look at our average daily attendance growth, you look at our weighted average daily attendance, and then you look at the values that are set by the state, by the Comptroller's Property Tax Division. Now, these values are, they're a year behind, but those values are important because the lower the values that they're set by the state, the higher state revenue that we're gonna get. So, we had a 9.5 percent increase in average daily attendance in 2017. We're projecting a little over 1.1 percent this year. We're projecting a little bit of a decrease for 2018. This is, again, this is average daily attendance, not necessarily enrollment. You know, you budget for enrollment because you have to budget for those bodies, but the state only gives you funding once they're in school. So let's keep that in mind. So, our weighted average daily attendance is all the special populations, special ed, gifted and talented, so forth. So we're projecting a 0.59 percent increase, so that our weighted average daily attendance, what's called WADA, is 59,498. And then finally, we're projecting that our Comptroller's Property Tax Division growth will be 9.34 billion, which is a 4.55 percent growth from the prior year. So, this is a bar chart of our growth and our average daily attendance. It's almost a 10 percent increase from 2011. So, with respect to 2018, we're projecting that our average daily attendance will be 43,376 students in attendance. Now, when we look at state funding, it's important for us to keep in mind what it is. State funding is a shared responsibility between the school district and the state. For the school district to generate state revenue and be able to get state funding, you have to impose a tax rate, what's called the compressed tax rate. And that tax rate is 66.67 percent of whatever was adopted back in 2005. Now, for the majority of the school districts who are at $1.50, their compressed tax rate is a dollar. For Socro ISD, we're at $1.35 by that time, our compressed tax rate's a little over 90 cents. So, bottom line is that if you impose that tax rate, then you get state funding from the state. And you go higher than that. And so, well, the key components are certainly our basic allocation and the special program allocations, and that's based on average daily attendance and weighted funding. So, the basic allocation is $5,140 from the state. However, our allocation is $4,737 because that amount is allocated by our compressed tax rate, 92 cents, okay? Now, that's adjusted, but if you're a small district, if you have an average daily attendance of less than 1,600 students, you get a higher allocation. If you're a mid-sized school district, in other words, between 1,600 and 5,000 average daily attendance, you get another adjustment. We're none of those, we don't get that. What we do get is the Cost of Education Index. This is an index that was done back in the 90s by the state, and it hasn't been adjusted since then, okay? So when we do that adjustment, we get our adjusted allotment is $5,242 per student in average daily attendance, and then there's additional funding for special populations, for the transportation, for high school allotment, and what's called the instructional allotment. So, this is what we're getting in tier one funding. Our projected revenue for tier one funding is about $303 million. So we're looking at this number right here, and it's based on all these allocations. Now, keep in mind that we're required to spend a certain percentage for each one of these special populations. So while we get maybe $30 million for career technology, we have to make sure we spend at least 58 percent of that. If we do not spend 58 percent, the auditors will then call us, they'll put us an audit finding, and we'll be required to spend the difference that we didn't spend over the next three years, over and above each one of those years' allocations. So it's important that we meet those thresholds. Now, what the state does, it backs out what they say is our share, which is this $86 million. So our share is our compressed tax rate times the value set by the state, and the remaining share is what's the responsibility of the state, which is the $217 million. Now, we talked about the fact that in past years, the state's share of funding has gone down from about 50 percent in 2005 to about 38 percent this year. And people will say, "Well, how can that be?" Well, if the district's share is based on property values and your tax rate, and your values are going up 5 percent every year, and in some districts, they go up 10 percent, and the state's responsibility is the basic allotment, and you don't change that. If you don't change that, except for maybe once every other legislative session, and some of these allotments are never changed, is it any wonder that this threshold, this amount goes up for each school district, and the state's share goes down? Factoring also is the fact that the state's getting about $2 billion from property wealthy school districts. So what does the state have to do? They have to do, increase the basic allotment. If they increase the basic allotment, then they'll allocate additional funding for both property wealthy school districts and property poor school districts. So, that's the amount that we're getting for tier one. We also get tier two funding. So tier two funding is the guaranteed yield for tax effort, if you go up over the compressed tax rate. It's based on weighted average daily attendance, and it's a guaranteed yield of $106 per WADA for the first 6 cents. After that, you get $31, and those are called copper pennies, and it's based on WADA. So, right now, our tax rate is 98 cents. We're getting the full 6 cents on the tier two. So we're getting $33.6 million on tier two funding. So, bottom line is, I wanna also talk about the Commission of Public School Finance. So this was established by House Bill 21 of the 85th Legislature in the first special session. So what you have there is it's their charge in developing and making recommendations to improve school funding and to provide new methods of financing, and to provide those recommendations to the legislature and the governor. Now, they're charged with providing this information by December of 2018. What they're trying to do is they wanna be able to make these recommendations by the end of the summer. So they were appointed by the Lieutenant Governor, the Governor, and the former Speaker of the House, that's Mr. Strauss. So opinions have varied and ranged between the fact that some people feel that the states have to do more with what they're getting, they're getting enough money, to those that feel that the districts need more funding for what's being charged to them by the legislature. So, it's important to keep in mind that they've received information from different various groups. So, several funding proposals that are meant to simplify the funding formula have advocated for more tax effort by a school district. So there's one that's gaining traction, at least a lot of interest, from the Equity Center. It's a kinda like a one-tier system, but if you have an M&amp;O tax rate that's a dollar or two or below, you're gonna get penalized. So while Dr. Spinoza and the members of this board have done a great job in keeping the same tax rate, it's possible in the future that we might be forced to raise the M&amp;O tax rate if this kinda comes to fruition. So it's important to just keep that in mind for the future. Also, some panelists have suggested indexing the basic allotment to property value changes that are set by the state, and that's a great idea, actually. Instead of waiting for the legislature to mandate a change in the basic allotment, what they're proposing is that these changes by the state should be tied into the basic allotment. So as values go up, the basic allotment goes up, and that increases or maintains the state's share of funding in the public school system. But we'll see what happens, so to speak. Finally, just something for your information. Former Representative Jimmy Don Acock stated that the commission should consider the inefficiency of a state running two parallel educational systems, the charter system and certainly the public school system. And I'm bringing this up because of the fact that we have to consider the impact of charter schools on traditional school districts. By and large, charter schools have a negative fiscal impact on traditional school districts that they border. Now, we have an idea that's coming in. That is a financial threat to the school district, plain and simple. That's what it is. And so, there's certainly some examples, Northeast ISD that've cut personnel, utility budgets, because they got a $17 million budget deficit. Lewis Bell ISD, back in February, they're dealing with declining enrollment. They have a huge growth in charter schools in their district. So they have to do something about funding because of the fact that they're losing money. And then certainly, Charter Schools and Dallas ISD, they've lost millions in dollars. So, it's something that we have to consider, hence the lower than past years increase in average daily attendance that we're considering. So having said that, our revenue estimates are $372.5 million. Primarily increases are coming in our local sources in property value growth. And again, if we're keeping the same tax rate, then the increase in our state funding of $2.2 million are really just based on our ATA growth, nothing more, okay? Now, we have capacity. We have the capacity to go to a dollar four. We can't do it in one year because of the effective tax recalculation. You could probably do it over two years, but it's something that we're not recommending at this time. And as we always do, we're providing revenue estimates for the next three years. I think it's important to just keep a track of what we can generate, given our current funding formula. So making no assumptions in the changing of the funding formula, and no change in the tax rate for maintenance and operations, what you're looking at is we're projecting growth of about $5 million in our total revenues for the future. That being the case, keep in mind that a one and a half percent salary increase is about $3.1, $3.5 million. That doesn't leave much growth for other initiatives of the district, okay? So what's our budget drivers right now? What we have in our budget currently, now, we're giving you just summary numbers tonight. April 24th is when we give you our detailed budget with respect to the general fund, the debt service fund, as well as the child nutrition program. But currently, what we have in our budget, we have a one and a half percent increase in compensation for all our employees. Those are nurses, librarians, speech therapists, counselors, and diagnosticians, as well as a one and a half percent increase for our other job classes. We have additional instructional positions that we talked about during our budget priorities. We've also added additional instructional positions for the special education program. Now, we made an adjustment to our staffing guide with respect to counselors. We didn't add counselors, but we made the adjustment to our staffing guide so that we wouldn't have what we consider overstaffing of counselors. So it's not an actual increase, but if we didn't change it, we would have to cut positions if we didn't wanna do that. So I wanna make sure that you're clear on that. We had adding instructional assistance to the pre-K program. We have additional funds to pay for high school testing. We already had some money, but we're kind of increasing that allocation. We have salaries for the new elementary school, Jose Carrasco Elementary School. We tell increase in utilities, as well as a local amount for facilities due to the new campus. So, some of this information is duplication of what I just told you, but with respect to additional budget, so operations, we added $175,000 in operations because of the growth. For special secondary education, $100,000, again, that's for testing and so forth, that we're adding over and above what they currently have. Transportation, we're budgeting 10 buses that we need for special education. That's about a million dollars. However, we've got about, almost $200,000 in committed funds. We did talk to the finance committee and asked for their consideration about using that for two of the buses, and then the other remaining buses, about $100,000, we put in next year's budget. So we'll probably send that information to the board as a whole and make sure that they're okay with that. So that's for buses that we're looking at. Again, we talked about 25 FTEs for growth. We may or may not need them, but at least we have to budget for them. With respect to special ed, there is a growth in our special education program. So currently, we're budgeting for about 15 additional positions, 10 for teachers, and five aides. And then we're looking at instructional aides for pre-K. So, I know in the HR committee, they're gonna be bringing to you a job description for these positions, and again, we've allocated $500,000. But again, this is just what we have in our current budget. What I wanna mention is that this is our budget. Our budget will change. We're gonna be looking at our positions to make sure that we haven't missed anybody. We might be looking to make sure that we haven't added more than we need to. But our current budget is $383.6 million. That's about a $2.7 million increase over our current amended budget. Now, some of the changes you might ask about is, with respect to, let's see, maintenance and operations, we got about $625,000 check this year from our insurance company to replace the SAC. So that was budgeted for this year. It's not there next year, that's why there's a decrease there. With respect to data processing, with E-Rate funding, there's about $1.4 million in Function 53 for computers because of E-Rate. I think it's Cycle 20. We're using it as part of the, I think, the WAN program. This year, it's about $400,000. So it's, there's some changes there. Also, keep in mind that we kind of amend budgets by rolling over encumbrances, purchase orders from the prior year, and that's why there's certainly differences. Now, when we give you the, next time we meet, we'll give you a detailed budget. It'll be by function, as well as within that function, every line item. And then we also give you how much for each salaries and so forth. So at that point, you can certainly see the differences, and you can ask questions. But primarily, those are some of the big numbers that you've got there. So, I mean, that's our current budget. Let me just keep forward. So, general fund activity, what you listed is our general fund activity for the last several years. As you see, we've had a surplus in all the years. Now, this past year, we had a deficit of $6.6 million, okay? Now, within that deficit, keep in mind that we made a $4.5 million contribution to our healthcare fund, and we might have to make one that's about between $6 to $8 million this year as well. So, revenue's $372 million, expenditures $383. So currently, we have a projected deficit of $11 million, okay? Again, I wanna keep in mind that these numbers are changed. As we get better information with respect to the revenue sources, whether it comes to, we're gonna be looking at our budget to see if maybe we haven't duplicated positions. Sometimes we might miss something that we have to add, or sometimes we duplicate things. But we'll be providing this information. Keep in mind that next year's budget, there's gonna be some things that are gonna hit our fund balance, and that is, we'll be completing Jose Carrasco Elementary School. So, what we have in our construction budget may not be sufficient to close everything, so some of that excess might be charged to our unassigned fund balance. We have roof repairs that we certainly are just getting, our bids, we're gonna be taking that to the board in June, I'm sorry, in April, this month, right? So we've got a bit of our idea of what we have to use if we need to. And then, again, healthcare expenditures. Hopefully, by this year, there won't be a need to be able to subsidize the healthcare fund, but it's something that we should, just keep that in mind. So, what you have here is our trend of our unassigned fund balance. We're $104.2 billion. Our minimum two-month requirement is $59.9 million, and this is our bond rating. As you can see, in 2016, Fitch upgraded our bond rating. But keep in mind is that it's still very healthy with respect to our bond program. So, for the 24th, our plan is to present to you the detailed budgets for the general fund, for the debt service, and the child nutrition. We'll also give you information with respect to the workers' comp and the healthcare, and then we'll discuss the May 8th budget meeting. May 8th is usually when we discuss compensation. We provide information. We'll also probably provide you some compensation information in our April 24th meeting, just preliminary, what the cost would be for the district, and what the increase would be for each particular job family. So, that's what we have with respect to our budget presentation. I know it's quick. This is preliminary, and usually, the meat of the information is next time we meet. But are there any questions with the presentation that we have, or any questions on the assumptions that we're using this year?
Mr. Ressa.
Yes, sir.
On the local funding assumptions, there's a statement there that the projected tax roll was $9.4 billion, and then the amount under the Comptroller's Property Tax Division value is $9.34. Why the difference between the two?
The state is always a year behind in coming back, and so they're always coming back to see if the local assessing organization is being fair in those assessments. Because they realize that with respect to assessment of those values, the lower the values, the more state funding that you can generate. And so the state comes back a year later to look at that, and there's always gonna be a difference in them, but so long as they're within a certain parameter, a certain percentage rate, then the state will accept that and say, "Okay, we're fine." If they feel for any reason that those values are artificially lower than what they should be, then the state will use their own values and say, "This is what we're gonna use for state funding purposes." And when that happens, then you get less state money. But the state always wants to make sure that the local organization is fairly assessing those values so that they're not inflating it too, I should say, deflating it so that they generate more state revenue. And so, that's the purpose of that, and that's why there's a difference.
Okay, I understand. And then, on the tier one funding, continued, there's the table where the spending requirements are there. Just for clarification, so for example...
He's right here, right?
Yes, sir. On the second line, 23, special education. So, please confirm that I'm understanding correctly. We get $22.5 million, and we have to spend 52 percent of that specifically on special education, or else we are penalized for the amount that we fall short in subsequent years.
That's correct.
And that's not a choice. That is mandated.
That's correct, sir. So in all of these, now, keep in mind with special education, we'll spend about $32, $34 million. We'll spend a lot more, and that's true of every school district that I know of.
Right.
But everything else, we have to spend that amount. So what we do is every six weeks, when we get our average daily attendance, I'll run reports, I'll see where we're trending, and sometimes, you'll see an amendment that says we're bumping up the budget by $400,000 because we wanna make sure that we spend what we're supposed to. And that's because of the fact that, you know, as you get your average daily attendance, you'll see that maybe certain populations have grown, spiked, and you didn't anticipate it. So what we do is we adjust it to make sure that might cause a little bit of a deficit, but I'd rather have the deficit than by any means getting an audit finding.
Yeah, okay, understood. On the tier two funding table, Mr. Ressa.
Yes, sir.
On level two, there's no copper pennies. Is it that our tax rate doesn't allow it?
No, we can still go up. So we...
No, I mean, our current tax rate doesn't provide for copper pennies at the moment.
That's correct, sir. Because we're at 98 cents, and so that's 6 cents are all golden pennies at this point in time.
Okay, but let's say we went up to 99, then we would have one copper penny there, right?
Exactly, sir.
Okay, understood. And then, on the next page, the Commission on Public School Finance page there, that dollar two, that's listed there, that would be an increase over our current tax rate, and I'm reading the statement correct, just what I'm focusing on is if we are below a dollar two, we would be penalized. So we're at 98 cents right now, that's 4 cents, right?
That's exactly right, sir.
On the other hand, though, you also said that we can't go up the full 4 cents. It's not that we can't, it's just that if we do, then we're subject to the rollback, correct?
That's correct. It's all predicated on our values that grew up at that time. We have to do that calculation. I don't think we can go up more than 3.5 cents, to be honest with you. So, it all depends on what happens, but you're right, sir. I mean, it all depends. It's a possibility we might be leaving some money on the table. I mean, so we'll see if it comes to fruition. We'll see if perhaps there's some home harmless provisions attached to it. But I mean, bottom line is that the state rewards tax effort. By the same time, that's not fair to those school districts that are being efficient and holding the line with respect to tax rates. But that's the way it is. So, that's a possibility, Mr. Nahara. Thank you for pointing that out.
And I think, I don't know, the state doesn't always reward tax effort, because not too long ago, we were forced to decrease our tax effort, and that's what we did. You know, with the compressed tax rate, we became efficient, we are frugal, we are very careful in our spending, and it just seems that recently, every single time, we get penalized because we're not, you know, out there just throwing money around like, you know, not to say other school districts were doing that, but, you know, we were efficient. We made sure that we did more with less, and now, you know, it just seems like most every proposal is coming back to bite us, you know?
Yeah.
So, okay. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Ressa. Thank you, Mr. Gara.
So thank you very much. We'll see you on the 24th. I just spilled water all over myself.
Next, we'll move on to Title B, Presentation of Performance Contracting.
Good evening, President Gara, Dr. Spinoza, members of the board. The Facility Committee has been looking at energy management systems or comparisons in order for us to look at possibilities of savings money on our energy bill. Over the last couple of years, we've had multiple firms approach us to either propose to us various ways of doing that, anywhere from job order contracting or performance contracting, hiring people on staff to manage, to go at various hours to check out systems and stuff, and they all came back, we boiled it down to three different companies. Johnson Controls, E3 is a Tazby facility service company, and Synergy. They all have, they've all come back with potential savings to the district if we would incorporate various methods that they would implore. Tonight, I have Johnson Controls here. They have presented to the Facility Committee, and the other companies have too. But Johnson Control has come up with a... But Johnson Control has come up with a proposal where they would be using performance contracting to help save energy costs by doing some work on the various schools. I gave them 13 campuses, and they'll show the 13 campuses in their presentation, but I think you all received an executive summary in your Thursday package. If you need an additional copy, we have a couple of those to review for you to look at. You know, so performance contracting has been along, been around for a long time. In my former life, when I was practicing architecture, I did performance contracting 25, 30 years ago. It has since changed, and it has changed a lot of the requirements. Back then, you had to use specific things, and they'll get into that a little bit more detail, but, you know, that contracting doesn't exist now, and it has changed. So I'm going to turn it over to Johnson Control. Joel Lopez will introduce his team, he has five people here. They're going to make a 15, 20-minute presentation, if not quicker. They have some handouts that you can go through, and then we can, you can ask any questions at that time. And it's basically, I inform them that we're just going to present what they have found in the executive summary, and what they have come up with, and they are proposing that they've come up with savings of $1.8 million in round numbers per year. And Joel, I'll turn it over to you.
Does anybody else need a copy?
I didn't bring mine.
I didn't bring mine either.
They got a second.
Oh, they have some.
Thank you.
Right here, please.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Cloud is our project manager.
Thank you.
And then Jim Conklin is our engineering manager. This book we just received, which didn't have, was part of the assessment we did originally. From that, and we're not going to be a powerpoint, because we'd like to go with this more of a roundtable setting to kind of interact with each other, if you could.
Thank you.
And this is really a lot of the same information that's in the paper.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and get started, since we're on a pretty tight time schedule here. I appreciate Mr. Ressa's presentation. I was an assistant supervisor for finance for 15 years, and it brought back a lot of bad memories, just so you know. I may not be able to sleep tonight, you know it. So anyway, as Mr. Ayton was saying, we did prepare a preliminary report, and the purpose of that preliminary report was to define the feasibility of delivering a self-funded performance contracting solution that addresses the needs that are identified in the district. And as you said, we identified about 13 campuses, we looked at the utility spend for those campuses as well as your other campuses in the district, we ranked those energy usages, and looked at the opportunity to generate, as he said, about $1.8 million of guaranteed savings to fund a performance contract. And so as we move into the presentation, and you look at Slide 2, let's talk a little bit about what performance contracting is. So performance contracting was established on the legislature under Texas Education Code 44901. And really what it does is it encourages, as y'all were already discussing, districts to be more efficient with your MNO dollars. Look for ways to decrease your MNO spend, your utility spend, and to allow you to capture those savings that are guaranteed under the terms of the contract by an ESCO, which we are an ESCO, to improve your facilities and upgrade your facilities. Under the contract, under the legislation, it requires that there be guaranteed savings by the ESCO, and so we have to guarantee that the performance and the savings are there. It allows the project to be funded over a maximum of 20 years, not to exceed the useful life of the equipment, and I think it's very important. Our typical project is probably 12 to 15 years is what we typically see as far as the time to do the projects that we work on. It requires the district to have a third-party engineer that validates our calculations, and so we're going to go through and we're going to calculate the savings that we project, we're going to show our methodology. Y'all will have a third-party engineer that will review all those calculations to verify that what we are saying is doable and can be achieved. It allows the district to make contributions over and above, if you so choose, if you wanted to bundle more into that contract to meet your district needs. And of course, it requires us to be a turnkey delivery. So what does Johnson Controls do? So basically, under the legislation, Johnson Controls would be, as the energy services company that if we were selected, is responsible to generate the design that will generate the guaranteed savings, and then to deliver the project in a method that, again, that those guaranteed savings are realized. So we're basically going to provide a turnkey solution, is what we're going to do. And in doing that turnkey solution, what we provide is the opportunity for the district to transfer risk, and if you move to Slide 3, we'll discuss how that risk gets transferred. So basically, what we're going to do is, this is not going to be just some rough number, this is going to be an engineer solution, we're going to know exactly what the scopes are, the scopes are going to be very tightly bound, so that we know that the equipment and what we're proposing will perform, and the savings will be generated. There's a performance guarantee, as we said, there is a cost guarantee, because we are responsible for the design as well as the delivery. What that means is, if we miss something on the design, we can't come back to you and say, gee, guys, we missed it, I'm sorry, we need to do a change order. There are no change orders under performance contract, so that is always a big plus in transferring risk from the district to the ESCO. You know, we use highly qualified contractors, we've been doing this for almost 40 years, we've been around for almost 140 years. But we have developed our systems where we vet all of our subcontractors, and so we know that the subcontractors that we'll be bringing are capable and able to deliver as required. We'll provide the project management throughout the process, and we'll talk a little bit more in detail how we do that. So moving to Slide 4, as you look at performance contracting and kind of the benefits of it, again, it requires that there be a guaranteed, totally self-funded solution so that you're reallocating utility and MNO cost to pay for the capital improvements. That is required under the legislation. It typically has a lower effective financing rate than a bond. You know, we look at lease purchase option, lease purchase financing as an option, and what that typically, you're not paying for underwriting fees, you're not having to do bond counseling, you're not having to pay for elections. So typically, the rates are very, are usually a little less, and the cost of issuance is less. The good part is, though, is that this type financing has no impact on your district's bonding capacity, there's actually an aging opinion that supports that, that so the 50-cent cap, I guess it is, on the INS side, this does not reduce that 50-cent cap. And again, the financing does not exceed the life of the asset, and I think that's very important, that, you know, you're not going to be paying on assets that, you know, have already passed their useful life. Again, there's a transfer of risk, we're going to assume all the risk of design and delivery, so that there's no change orders, and we're going to have the performance guarantee solution. You know, as part of this process, one of the things we hope to work with, if we're selected, is to help you maybe look at providing equity among your campuses. I mean, your bond program addresses specific needs as far as the bond programs. This allows you to be able to have the funding to address campus needs throughout the district, and have the funding to be able to do that. You know, our process that we'll do, you know, we believe will expedite the design, that expedite the delivery, and provide the results that you're looking for. So let's talk a little bit about scope, and we get into the actual project scope on Slide 5. Basically, as Mr. Ayton said, they assigned us X number of campuses, 13 campuses to look at, where there was the presence of old rooftop units, RTUs. And those rooftop units are reaching the end of their useful life, they are using the old R22 refrigerant, which is no longer going to be produced. As you see in the graph on the right, by the year 2020, it'll be totally phased out. And that has resulted that, you know, for this type of refrigerant, the price is escalating rapidly. Currently, a pound of refrigerant is $54. The new refrigerant, 134A, which is in the new systems, runs about $5.63 a pound. And so, you know, if you're having to work on an existing piece of equipment, and say you have to totally drain that piece to replace the compressor and do that, I mean, you're talking, you know, for a five-ton unit, you're probably talking six to 12 pounds of refrigerant. And so you can see, there's a significant cost just for the materials of the refrigerant going back into that, when you talk about, you know, say, $540, you use 10 pounds of refrigerant. So in doing our preliminary study, we identified that there was about 788 units, and you can see the breakdown there of the various campuses where those units are located. And so in developing our solution, we were looking for a way to be able to develop a self-funded solution that would totally pay for the replacement of these 788 units with guaranteed savings. And so as we looked at that, one of the opportunities that we have here is to look at the lighting systems within the district. You have a lot of lighting systems that are older generation T8 lighting, second tier, third tier lighting, you have a little bit of T12, not much, you have in your gyms, you have some old metal Haydiot lights, which are less efficient. And so we see an opportunity to come into the district and provide you with a new LED engineered lighting solution. And LED lighting has really changed in recent years. You know, it now is very cost-effective, the payback based upon the savings that are generated is very short. And so we have the opportunity to engineer a solution, the lights themselves come with like a 10-year warranty, 50,000 burn hours, and so that's the manufacturer warranty on those. It's going to use less electricity, and of course, we're going to ensure that if that project is selected, that all the lighting level requirements per code are met at the desktop. So we'll be taking before and after measurements to ensure that that happens. The next slide on Page 7 basically talks about the different type technologies we look at. LED lighting is really changing, as I say. You know, you have the opportunity now, you can change the ambient light levels within the classroom, at the desktop, you can, you know, turn lights different colors in case of emergency, for example, there's technology out there that allow you to turn the lights green in the hallway to show exits during a fire exit drill, or turn them red to note ways that you shouldn't go. So this technology is vastly changed. And with JCI, we have our own in-house engineering staff, so we would be providing the engineer solution for any lighting solution that was brought to the table. On Slide 8, we are vendor-neutral. By that, what we mean is, we're going to provide the equipment that meets your specifications, we're going to provide the equipment that your district is currently using. What we want to do is not change out, but we want to enhance the capital investments that y'all have already made. So in the systems and equipment that y'all are typically using, we want to standardize that, so your maintenance staff is already familiar with how to work on this equipment, we want to improve and enhance that. And above all, we just want to make sure we deliver your goals. When you look at Slide 9, as we said, we did look at all the utility data within the district, and we benchmarked your facilities. The district currently spends about $6.6 million of utility cost. We have, and based upon our preliminary study, we're looking at about a $1.8 million, a little over $1.8 million of potential guaranteed savings to be able to fund the capital improvements that we've discussed, replacement of RTUs, improved lighting within your campuses, and upgrades to your control systems for each of those units. And so we're basically looking at taking and reducing your current MNO spend by $1.8 million, capturing that spend, and being able to apply that to pay for the capital improvements over a term of 12 to 15 years. And when you look at that, we're just, that's on Slide 10, that's what we're talking about, is taking that $1.8 million, you have the potential to fund a little under $24 million a project. Not saying that that will be the ultimate project, but that's what we saw the potential for. Again, as we develop this project with you, this is a partnership, it is a collaborative effort, we're going to meet your goals, y'all will define what would be in a project, what would not be in a project, we're not going to dictate that. You know, the scopes that we're looking at, again, replaces 788 units, deliver the LED lighting solution, and hopefully improve the classroom setting. When you look at Schedule, or Page 11, what this is, and we kind of show this as transparency, we have actually developed as part of our process what's called our solution modeler. And in that solution modeler, as I say, this is your project, this is to meet your goals, what is included in the project is what you want. And so we will develop this solution modeler, and we will populate it with all the various facility improvement measures, lighting at each classroom, at each facility, the RTUs at each facility. And what that allows us then to do is, as we sit down and bring the project back with you and your staff, we're able to turn things off and on. So if you decide, okay, this facility probably may not be used five years from now, we can turn that facility off, it'll automatically update the savings and the cost. But as you can see here in this model, you can see that how the cash from the savings is used to pay for the debt service. And again, that has to be guaranteed under the terms of the contract, or under the legislation under 44901. Delivery, on Page 12, we talked, let's talk a little bit about our delivery, because I think at the end of the day, it really is about delivery. We can say all the things we want to, but at the end of the day, you want to have a project that is delivered on time and complete. In the back of our packet, we've included references, and please feel free to look back at those in the back, but we have references for about 60-plus million dollars of projects that this team has delivered in the past five to seven years. Corpus Christi ISD, Alice ISD, County TO ISD, Phase 1 and 2 in Nueces County. So we're proud of the processes that we've done to deliver projects. And the way that we do that is, Mr. Cloud, who is our operations manager for the marketing, has developed a web-based program, and basically that web-based program, we take a project, so let's take a 788 units, we break each of those units down into tasks, and so we say, okay, for this unit, it has to be disconnected, electricity has to be removed, the curb adapter has to be installed, the unit has to be reconnected, we have to connect controls, and make sure that unit is fired up and ready to work. And so we take each of those tasks and assign them to the, on the web-based document, assign that to a subcontractor, assign a date that that will be completed by. And because it's live, web-based, we're able to, on a continual basis, keep that updated. So the contractor will have an iPad, the contractor will go out, do the work, at the end of that, he will check that that work has been completed on the iPad. Our onsite foreman, in which we will always have an onsite foreman whenever work is being done, will also go and inspect that work to see if it is accepted, was this unit, all the tasks completed, were they all completed correctly? If they are not, he'll reject it. What that gives us is an opportunity to immediately do the punch list right then, as opposed to waiting to the end of the project, and you get this monstrous punch list, and you're trying to get the subs back, and they're not wanting to come back. We punch as we go. And we found that to be a very effective system. It also, the web-based system, we can allow staff to have access to that, board can have access, whoever you determine should have permission to that, can have access to that web-based information, and can see the work that's being done. The other big thing as part of this is that it provides the communication with the staff at the campus level, because we want the campus-level staff to know when we're going to be onsite, we don't want to impact the classroom, we work around so there is no impact to the classroom, do work in the evenings, we do work on breaks, we do work on the weekends, and through the schedule, we're able to do that. We understand that that schedule is going to change, there's going to be a PTA meeting that's going to have, that you didn't know about that's come up, or there's going to be a basketball game or something. We will immediately reschedule the work, because we have it already all scheduled out, we can adjust and adapt, and make the changes on the fly, so that we're not doing that. But the big thing is, we'll be in constant communication, because we have a full-time onsite foreman that will be communicating with your staff to ensure that we're supporting you. We're going to provide support after the installation as well. There's measurement verification that's required under the legislation. We have to, on an annual basis, measure, do a measurement verification where we go through, we audit the savings to ensure that they have been received. If they haven't, under the terms of our contract, we will write you a check. So if we guarantee $1.8 million, and the savings comeback is $1.7 million for a year, we would have to write you a $100,000 check. On the converse, if the savings come back $2 million versus the $1.8, the district would keep 100% of the extra $200,000 under the terms of the contract. We're going to train throughout the system, throughout the time... Uh, we're gonna train throughout the system, throughout the time we're onsite, after the site, after we leave. Uh, we have PSAs through our local branch here. Uh, we do have a local branch office here with Johnson Controls that, that, that works on a daily basis. Talk a little bit about timeline. Uh, so we've, we've completed preliminary analysis. Uh, we've discussed the possibility of using tips procurement as the internal procurement method for selection of, of us as the ESCO. We have to do what's called project development, which takes about sixty to ninety days. Uh, there's a project development agreement that is an actual contract that authorizes Johnson Controls to enter into detailed design. It usually runs, it, there is a fee associated with it. The, our fee typically runs about one to three percent of the total budget, uh, for that engineering work and design. And of course, that would require board approval. Uh, after we do that, we come back and, and, and we'll, we'll work with staff to get the final project. We'll do contract review and issue that, and then of course, enter into the contract, into the actual construction. Uh, on slide fifteen, again, just adds a little more detail. You can see that we're gonna be doing workshops throughout the process. We're gonna be, you know, again, this is a, going to be a partnership and a collaborative effort that we want to work with you on. Uh, we also have a dedicated grant staff that, uh, we will look for grant opportunities. Uh, we'll issue a grant report. What we typically find is there's not a lot of grants out there for facilities, but they're all different educational grants that we identify that will make aware to you. We will do all the legwork and prepare all the documents for any utility rebates available to the district. Our staff, we have the staff to be able to do that. And obviously, we have the financial strength to be able to stand behind this. Johnson Controls, as I said, has been in business for almost a hundred and forty years, uh, forty billion dollars of annual assets. So, that's kinda our presentation, guys. I know you have questions. I'll go through that very quickly.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, they came and they talked to us on our facilities meeting, but I thought it was important enough for the rest of the board. And they could ask for the rest of the board to ask, and has any questions to ask, ask right now and, and, um, please, anybody have any questions? If I may.
He's gonna go first. Age before beating.
You're taking too high of yourself.
Means I go last. Thank you.
Looking at the, uh, LED, are those mercury-based units, the lights?
Ready to question, are there what units?
Are they mercury-based lights, LEDs?
Are there mercury-based lights on the LED?
Probably.
That's right.
Sure, we brought them with us.
And, and you hit them over there.
Yeah.
I'd intentionally.
Do you know the answer?
No, I'm never gonna ask that. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, the manufacturers that we use are all American manufacturers. We use, we, we have built Solanga, we use.
No, I don't.
That's the top.
I would tell you, they don't use mercury anymore.
Excuse me?
They don't, they don't use mercury anymore.
Not, not anymore, there's, 'cause at one time when they started this, the disposal of a unit had to be specific and.
You know, the ballast have to, contain, you guys have existing ballast and have to be disposed of properly.
Your, your existing lights will have.
Oh, I mean, you gotta understand, Mr. Gonzalez, when he went to high school, I mean, to school, they used, they used candles. So, you know. Sorry, Mr. G, I couldn't pass that one up.
With lead in the holder.
I couldn't pass that one up, yeah, I apologize.
No, but when they, they replaced the incandescent lights to the new ones, to get rid of the old light bulbs and bring the new ones.
Yeah, we were, we were responsible to ensure.
Yeah, our, our subcontractors, they put them all in metal drums, containers, and all packed with stuff, those are the product.
So, in case of, uh, uh, breakage of any one of those, would they give any kind of threat?
Yeah, we, we would be responsible to ensure the property does, we have, we have a very strict section protocol. And we have a very strict section protocol, so yes, we would be responsible.
Thank you.
Can I, could I?
Mr. You.
I have a number of questions, but I'll, I'll start with the harder one, uh, because we, we've met with you all before. Uh, even after this presentation, and, and it's a hard question, but I, we're gonna work together, I need to be straightforward on. I fail to see any savings to our district, okay? Based on what your presentation, we're gonna buy a bunch of stuff from somebody and we're gonna pay for that. We're gonna pay some money for you all, uh, to manage this and provide us the savings. Uh, the savings, we're gonna pay the loan or the money that we're gonna do to use this, and the district benefits from nothing other than maybe we save some electricity, which we're doing okay and we feel good about it. How does the district benefit?
The benefit is, is that you have seven hundred and eighty-eight rooftop units right now that are sitting out there and that are at the end of the useful life. And this is a mechanism, as I said, you know, to provide funding to be able to address them. So I currently didn't think of addressing the bond, uh, and, and so that's the benefit that you're looking at is to be able to provide capital funding to address a need that has been identified within the district that you currently do not have funds necessarily.
Which we're gonna borrow and pay interest on to do.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so, I mean, some of these units, I can tell you probably pretty sure, Mr. Eynton has them on the schedule and over time, some of them will be replaced. And if that needs to be accelerated.
Can you go to the mic?
But what I'm interested in knowing.
To the mic, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they're trying to record the meeting, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Uh, so, 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 that's one thing there. Now, backing up and again, if you could please keep the cost in mind, 'cause the issue is, are, is this gonna be a savings to our district or not? Um, I, I obviously, some of our older lighting fixtures, that'll be a problem. There, there'll be a scheduled replacement of that. Our newer schools, we've done better, and then our energy savings. In the past, when we've had these audits, they wanna save us five million dollars and, and now we're down to, uh, you know, uh, one point eight. So, uh, again, obviously, our energy is a little bit better. So, of this, what I can see, well, let, let me back up. On your summary, executive summary, you provided four scenarios.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, the, the largest one is scenario number four. And, and if I understand correctly, that would be forty-two of our schools, that you would do work in there. Uh, and if we did that, that's the almost twenty-five million dollar project, which we'd have to find some money, again, to, to pay for these services. And then over time, we're gonna pay that back. Now, if I did my rough math here fairly accurately, it kinda matches your thirteen, you know, point seven six years to get this thing paid off. So for this period of time, if we match the savings in electricity that you're saying, it doesn't take that much to pay. There's no benefit to the district at this point. So, so that's one of the problems I always have. I don't see any savings that we're gonna put into the classroom at this point. Fourteen years from now, we are, but if I read this correctly, the light fixtures and the bulbs you're installing have a five or ten-year warranty. So by then, I'm replacing bulbs and fixtures anyway. See, maybe if you could help me understand, 'cause I'm having trouble with the math.
I think I understand. So, the first thing is, is you're correct. The goal of this project is not to save excess savings and, and reduce the overall spend. The spend's gonna be consistent, right? Um, when you look at the cash flow, when you look at, at the project, um, the goal is, we can all agree, you need to replace a unit, like you said, there's a plan, there's, there's an alternative plan to replace them. We need to replace lights. The goal of this project is to get those details down. We're gonna come back to you and show you. This is what it looks like under performance contracting, including the interest, including the savings. Here's how it affects your budget every year for the next, let's say fifteen years. Alternatively, if you had done it on your current plan, here's what it would cost you. We will account for the ten-year warranty, we'll account for the, any bulb being replaced after ten years. We'll also show you, in working with, uh, Mr. Eynton, what would it look like outside a performance contract. Our goal is to be transparent with all that information and hopefully to reveal itself where you can see, given the two alternatives, we need to replace the equipment, this is the best way to do it. The benefit is we replace the rooftop units we need badly, we upgrade the lighting that's important to the education environment, we get what we want. And what you'll see is financially, the benefit is financially, this is the best way to do it. And that's our goal is to prove that to you over the course of this development.
So on your mathematics that you did here and, and your projections, did you account for changes or do you have a formula you use? Or, we know that utilities are gonna continue to go up. Now, now you have a formula here, you have a, a graph here in place, did you account for that within the cost of utilities and savings?
Absolutely. So we project out escalations in the budget for the next fifteen years. And that's a, a, a coordination with us and the staff to make sure we all agree on that. When we go into contract, that's in the contract terms, what that escalation is projected to be, uh, and how that affects the savings. And we all agree on what that should be and, and put it in the contract. So, the, the savings, the financial model, including that escalation of the entire model, is not only agreed upon with the school, it's also reviewed by a third party, it's reviewed with, with your financial experts to make sure we all understand what we're projecting for the next fifteen years.
Now, Mr. Nakhad, last time, I mean, he may was planning on maybe asking this, but there's a term for this. Now, since you all are managing this project, there is a fee. What is your fee for you managing, say the, the large project, the forty-two schools? What, what is Johnson Controls gonna charge us to manage this project?
So the, the way we work is just like any construction company. We got our money upfront as part of the margin of the job.
Right, right.
What we do, the first thing we do when we get through this project is we have a kickoff meeting.
Sure.
Before you obligate any money in the, in the performance contract to us, we sit down and we work with your staff and with you to lay out exactly how we're gonna show that cost, exactly what the, the cost breakout is, what the margin is. So before you obligate any, any money as far as the performance contract, we're all agreeing on it upfront. So that'll be very transparent to you.
What's your percentage of your fee? Because we've talked to other companies and I was kind of amazed what the percentage is. Uh, what, what is your fee percentage of, of the cost of the project? Do you have a number?
Uh, it's gonna range, 'cause a lot of it's fixed costs, so percent of the job is gonna range small jobs to big jobs. Tony, do you have a, a range?
Forty-two schools. That way we have a number of schools. What, what, what is your fee percentage?
It would, it would be safer for, for us to look, he would call you back with that, with that fee. We need to compare it to another job this size compared to a small job that we've done. Uh, this is a pretty good-sized job, you know, and, and Rusty works on a project, a hundred million dollar project in Hawaii. So you compare that a hundred million dollar project to a twenty-four million dollar project, and what I'm doing right now is six hundred thousand. So we would sit down and talk to Mr. Eynton, uh, to get these costs together, we'd sit down and visit with him, see exactly when we had access to the school and how much supervision, you know, 'cause the cost is, do I put one superintendent here, do I put five superintendents here? We went through this project, we did a hundred million dollar project in Hawaii, twenty-four months, over all the islands in Hawaii. So does he want, do you want us out of here in twelve months? Do you want us out of here in twenty-four months? All that makes a big difference in, in what our.
So, so, basically, what we, we have, as like any general contractor, we have general conditions, that's what we're talking about. That's the fixed part of it. And then we have, well, just, just markup, basically, is what we typically would have. And so for a project, you know, our typical markup is anywhere from ten to fifteen percent, and our, our fixed cost is anywhere from five to ten percent. And, yeah, so that would be kind of a range for, for.
That's what I've heard before.
And that's.
I wanted to ask was your number. Now, you're gonna charge us for design, and then you also said deliver. So you're gonna charge, there'd be a fee, all inclusive, in this, ten to fifteen percent or five to ten percent, for not only designing the project, but then also the delivery of that.
That's, that's correct.
And we pay, like you just mentioned, that cost upfront?
No, that's, that, if we move forward, now that's incorporated into the contract.
Okay.
That, that's what we call.
Let me make sure I understand your question. What you figure you're talking about?
Well, I, I'm not sure if you're breaking that into two fees. One, one would be a fee for design, I would imagine, and that's factored into something, and then delivery. What we're talking about here is you actually making sure the, the, the lights go up.
Right, right. So the project development agreement that we talked about is what is a contract, and there is a fee in that contract.
Okay.
That's the fee of what we talk about, you work one to three percent of the project. And that's defined in that initial contract, and that authorizes us to do the, the design.
Okay.
And then that gets, if you move forward into the contract, that gets rolled into the contract.
Okay.
As, as a cost of the contract. And, and then, you know, then our fixed costs, our, our general conditions and, and our margins will be associated.
So let me move maybe to a little bit shifting here. Your savings that you're projecting, is that based on the air conditioning units? And then you wanna change some lighting units? Did you wanna change the schedule that the lights are on?
No, sir. So, so the way that, that the savings are calculated.
Sure.
Is, is we say, there's an additional kickoff. Y'all have a way to operate your facilities. Say the lights come on at such and such time, they got, we'll look at, obviously, sensors as an option to be able to save additional, you know, occupancy sensors, or daylight harvesting or things like that to enhance that. But y'all will set the operator, so you tell us, uh, we're wanting to operate these units, we're operating these units from kicking on at seven in the morning, turning off at four o'clock. The set temperatures that we've used are for cooling, you know, seventy-two to seventy-four for cooling and for heat, sixty-eight to seventy-two. What we do is, we say, okay, that's your parameters, we, that's in the contract. We calculate all the savings based upon those parameters. We don't tell you, no, you gotta change the parameters and y'all operate the system.
And all that's guaranteed.
It's all, it's a contract.
There's always obviously the concern that we're shutting off computers when we don't need to.
Right.
Uh, we've got PTA meetings with people sweating like a pig because we've decided we're gonna turn off our conditionings.
Right. And we make allowances for that, for those very same things.
Okay. On your, uh, guaranteed total self-funding, um, we go out and find a loan or you all, or we, or you guys will fund this project?
Well, what, we, we won't actually make the funding, so we don't do the funding.
Okay.
So we will look for, we have some leaders that we work with, will work with your, your staff as well. We're not making any money on the lending. Uh, our goal is simply to find the best lending vehicle for the district and to work with your staff and your FAA and whoever that is to, to be able to structure that so that it will benefit you.
So, so the twenty, if we did all the schools, the twenty-five, twenty-four something million dollars, that would be plus interest. So the thirteen point seven six year payout may not be that, maybe fifteen years, maybe.
Yes.
Greater than that.
The, the example that I gave you.
Yes, sir.
Was a fifteen-year example. It was, what, I used one, I rounded one point eight billion and twenty-four billion. And it was self-funding over fifty, and I used a four percent interest.
Uh, so, maybe to clarify on, on the warranty thing. Some of the fixtures, some of the lights have a five-year, some have a ten-year warranty. If I heard correctly, you said you will guarantee those beyond that, my, how far longer?
Fifty thousand hours.
Which is how long?
Which is almost sixteen years. Depending on how you're using, so it's, is, that, that's a variable?
Sure.
Four hours.
Yeah.
If you're looking at four hours versus.
Yeah, 'cause if we're using a, a particular room sixteen hours a day, a particular room four hours a day, that's gonna fluctuate.
It's good, that's right. And that, that will be calculated.
Okay. I have a couple of other things on my mind, but I don't wanna monopolize the meeting. Let me go ahead and let Mr. Nakhad ask a couple of questions, I may come back.
I, I'd like to address one of the other.
Oh, yes, sir, please.
So say, say you wanted to save money, you have what we call positive cash flow. Say, okay, I don't wanna do seven hundred and eighty-eight units, I wanna do six hundred. That will in turn weaken, weaken scaling where now there's additional money that's saved that we here, over here, it's still gonna pay for the note, but there's additional savings versus paying for all the units upfront. So I mean, we can manipulate that to be able to get money back to the district if that was one of the goals.
Right. And that may be part of the goal. The, the goal is, how is this gonna save us money? Uh, because, I mean, you know, maybe a little facetious if you think about that. Uh, Mr. Eynton can send somebody up on a rope and change a, an air conditioner unit cheaper than twenty-five million dollars. And I know we're talking about a lot of units, but you know, how is this gonna be benefit to our district or not?
There's a couple of, that's, that's a great point.
Yeah, and I, I'm not trying to be sarcastic. I know you're very professional, we've heard you before, so I'm kinda wanting to get this straight in my mind. And I don't need to be rude, truly.
No, 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 not at all. No, one of the things that I think is also i- is a consideration here is, you know, with a lot of your campuses, I mean, with your seven hundred and eighty units, obviously, there's economies of scale when you make that type of purchase, there's economies of scale that'll be received based upon our purchasing strength and, and some of our agreements and things that we have in place. So we'll be able to reduce the cost of the equipment even perhaps a lot less than the occupancy. The other thing is, when you're looking at replacing this number of units, you know, when you replace one or two units and you have to call out a crane, you have to mobilize that crane, and you have the cost associated with that crane, versus we'll have one mobilization for a building and we'll have that crane on site and we'll.
Redo all of them.
And, and so there are some cost benefits that can be realized when you do a larger scale project.
I understand, thank, I may come back in a minute, but.
Okay.
Certainly, Mr. Gera or.
Mr. H, please. For the HVAC conversions, why not, or for the HVAC replacement there, why not just convert them from R-twos to one thirty-fours?
You can't, can't do it.
You can't?
No, sir. The high level, no, you can't, you can't convert them. So they're not manufacturing that equipment. So, for example, even if the unit, you have a split system, like in your house, where you have part of the unit inside, part of the unit outside. Uh, I mean, if you, if the compressor goes out outside, you gotta replace both halves. You can't just replace the outside, you know, because it is not being manufactured, so.
So if I understand correctly, in twenty twenty, we're not gonna be able to get any more refrigerant for any of those rooftop units?
There will be no more produced. Whatever's out there is out there, so you supply, demand, you can imagine the price, but.
You can't even.
If there's some question with claim and what is supplied or inventory.
Okay.
They no longer sell R-twenty-two units, it's against the law.
Okay. In your forty-two campus scenario, scenario four, did you account for the fact that some of our facilities are, are older than others? You know, I assume that Socorro High School was not included with any replacement because you all know that we're rebuilding it, so.
You're excluding it, that's correct.
Right, but then, you know, there's like Escondrias, which was one of our first, and so, um, when did we do the units there?
Has been previous on the early childhood or the.
You have refrigeration.
Early childhood's got the best system in the world.
Right.
We don't get any calls on it. It's got a geothermal.
I mean, so did you all? I mean, so did you all take that into consideration in that particular scenario? Or did you make assumptions that?
In the preliminary, at this point, there was a su- we had to make assumptions to, to answer your question, uh, to, a- as we looked at that. And, and part of the process that we go through, back to our, our solutions model, is that we're going to show by campus and by facility, you know, okay, we replaced the lighting at whatever facility you wanna name.
Yeah.
You know, it, the savings is gonna be this, basically, changing from the current system to the new system. The, the cost is gonna be this, the payback's gonna be this. And that's where we get into the discussion of and working collaboratively to go, you know, let's not do this campus. Let's drop this campus out, the payback's not good, you know, we got good systems there, we're not having issues. And, and so again, this is y'all's, this is y'all's project, not our project, to, to dictate what the final scope will be. And so to your point, there will be some that we'll look at and go, we don't recommend doing this.
And, and with that, sir, if I could, third party reviewer, as Mike mentioned earlier, works for the district. And he might make that comment, he might come back, Mr. Einzen and the staff say, guys, this one doesn't make any sense. And so that guy works with you all, literally looking over our stuff to ensure by the legislation that it's self-funded. And that, that's really a risk now for the district now is being really, has, has no risk because that third party reviewer's gotta sign off with his stamp.
How long have you all been doing this? And let me tell you why, okay? Cause, I mean, I have light fixtures in my house where I've replaced, you know, with, with LED bulbs. But I can go down to Walmart and buy an incandescent bulb for less than a buck. You know, when I buy an LED, LED bulb, I'm paying ten dollars, all right? And I've had one go out on me, all right? So, I mean, yeah, according to your plan, this is, you know, five year, ten years, whatever, but are we, you know, is it? I mean, if we're gonna save two million dollars a year, but then spend three million dollars in year eleven because we gotta replace bulbs, then there's no benefit to us. And all the references I see, you know, date back the furthest to two thousand fourteen, that's four years. So they haven't had to replace the system on itself. And I'm not sure that, you know, LED bulbs, we can go that far back either, but, you know, have you all looked at? Because, you know, the project sounds great right now, but I keep thinking, okay, you know, I walked into Home Depot over there and I spent a hundred bucks to put bulbs in two rooms. You know, I'm exaggerating, but that's what it felt like. You know, you never realize how many bulbs you have until you want real bright light and they're real expensive. And, you know, you think you've spent more money than you should on bulbs. And about halfway through, you're tempted just to go back to incandescent because, you know.
But, and that's twofold. I mean, incandescents are real hot.
Mm-hmm.
So they generate heat.
Right.
Air conditioner comes on. All those calculations come into play using LED light where there is no heat coming from them. And then the economy is scaled. I mean, once again, LED lighting four years ago were here. Now it makes a lot more sense to be able to do that. And with all the variables that you can use LED lighting, they just can't use incandescent.
Yeah.
The, the other, the other thing that we can do is, is work with, on, work on the warranty, you know, to extend the warranty. Now, obviously there's a, a, some additional costs associated with that, like anything, when you have extended warranty. But if that was a concern, we could look at ways to structure the contract in a way that we did provide warranty throughout the period, you know.
Of the contract?
Of the contract.
And we've done that. But, but to your, to your two main concerns though, obviously, we have to show that, that the life cycle cost is, is more effective to, to buy LEDs. Um, that upfront cost being more expensive. Uh, the second thing is, we do have our own, uh, lighting division within Johnson Controls, we have a lot of data. So I'll take that challenge to make sure when we come back to you, we can prove to you, uh, that you're not gonna pay some absorbent fee in year eleven and they do have that, that, that true lifespan.
What about the sensor, um, controls because?
Occupancy sensors?
Yeah, the occupancy sensors, you know, I, we're in a building, um, that was recently we remodeled and we have them. You know, but if you stay still long enough, for example, on test days, where no one is supposed to talk, no one is supposed to get up, you know, and, and the movement is very minimal.
What's good?
I know.
Have you quit breathing?
No. Well, my point is, is that, you know, we're in an office with none of that environment. We don't test, we don't, we just get busy every once in a while for about thirty minutes and the sensor turns the lights off. You know, and then you sit there, if you're the only person in the room, then you're sitting there trying to fight the light, you know, and wave your hands and stuff. So the sensor turns back on, so, I mean.
It seems like you've done that before.
Yeah, a whole lot. Um, are we gonna run into those issues? I mean, with.
There's different types of sensors, some are remote.
So we got the cheap ones.
Where you're waving your, others, uh, and I'm not, I'm not gonna be very technical on this, whether it's, whether it's heat or how it's heating you up, infrared. So, uh, so that it just depends which type of sensor.
Okay.
You purchased or which one was installed. I had sensors in my house, in my bathroom, it all get light comes on, go down the hall. I don't know if it sees me through the mirror, the light comes on, so it's not very, it's a sensor, I put it, you know, so you go down the hall, bathroom light comes on. So it all depends on, on what, type sensor.
And during the design, you go to application.
We're not gonna be forced to buy.
So it's like you said, in an office building or.
Specifically from that.
That's the sensor you're talking about, the problem is.
We're gonna pay equipment.
That's when we start talking and go, if you want sensor, what, what conditions, you wanna make sure you don't have to. So then just go, then start raising their hands or you test if you'd like to. Or something, so there's technology, there's levels that give you that and, and it's not the absorbent thing, but yeah, then you go to infrared and motion sensor combined. Usually you don't have to worry about it. Just like you said, now the prices have come down, the technology behind this and especially our control is going, going up as well.
The sensor locations, you get a room, we had all cubicles in there, someone sat way over there in cubicle, that's the sensors on the area.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
And I see it, so you have to look at the location, at the, uh, surrounding and put multiple sensors there. One of the things is in relation to that though, is I'll, I was gonna say is that as part of our design, what we actually do is we come in and put in what's called data loggers. And so we will put data loggers on these lights. And so it'll be able to determine how long those lights are staying on. And so what we're able to do with that is to quantify, back to being able to calculate the savings. What is the savings potential of this occupancy sensor? You know, and, and being able to turn the lights off and it not be operating after three-thirty, if it's unoccupied or whatever. So we're actually gonna gather real data through these data loggers to be able to come back again as part of this process and say, okay, here's the potential savings that you can realize by doing occupancies, occupancy, you know what I'm saying? If it's particularly.
So what, uh, what, um, I don't know, this to me, if I had to answer, would be a tough question, so I'll ask it anyways. What is there in your agreements to protect you? Because I heard, I mean, of course you all, Johnson Controls is not in business to lose money. So, you know, if it is our, um, carelessness, you know, if, uh, we all of a sudden have activities in every single gym across the entire district, every single weekend, from here to eternity, and all of a sudden, you're not, we're not realizing one point eight million dollars, but we see a one point eight, eight increase and I understood somewhere along the lines that you all would cut the check for the difference, right? So what, um, what, what protects you all from having to cut us two million dollar checks every year?
Yeah, so obviously the contract provisions have, have statements for that. It's really about documenting the baseline conditions and documenting what we all agree will happen. So for the examples we really showed of, of rooftop units and lighting, let's take those. Uh, we agree that the rooftop unit for this classroom in the school runs from seven in the morning to seven at night, right? Uh, we document that in the contract, you will get your savings. Uh, let's say that the conditions change in year ten and that's operating twenty-four hours a day, right? So obviously we can't cut you a, a, a check because the conditions changed. Um, in true reality, the question would be, what would you have spent had it not been for the performance contract under those same conditions? Having a less efficient rooftop unit up there now, if that goes to running twenty-four hours a day, you're actually very thankful, even more thankful that you put in the new unit. And now you're actually saving even more, um, every hour that the unit runs on a more efficient unit is a great thing. But to prevent us from that shortfall, yes, there is a, uh, the terms and conditions that will state, here's what we agree the units will run. If that changes, that will not result in a shortfall.
Okay. And how about, um, what's, what's the basis of the savings? I mean, are we looking at our, you know, electric bill in January of twenty eighteen and our electric bill in January of twenty nineteen? And the difference between the two is savings or?
The basis of the savings is, is really quantifying the run hours of the equipment, quantifying the, uh, efficiency of the equipment. And making sure that if we, if we know that, if we know the unit is running, let's take the lights in this room. If we know these lights run eight hours a day and that we know we can, we're gonna cut the power, uh, of those units about fifty percent, actually probably more, seventy percent, then the equation's easy. The savings calculation is easy. On the backside, how do we quantify that on the backside? We measure the light before we pull it out. We measure the light either every year if need be to make sure that the light on the backside is truly less efficient. If it's, if it's running at eight hours a day, then the, the equation's easy. What's important in that calculation is that it's not just Johnson Controls saying, yes, this is the savings and this is how we verify it. Uh, what's important is you have a third party engineer reviewing those and saying, yep, um, exactly what they said. The run hours are this, I can see your logger data, um, your power was dropped, you're gonna measure this before and after. And so it's all a verified process with a third party. But it's predicated upon the key variables that we're affecting, which in this case is the KW output of the light bulb and the efficiency of the roof con units.
Okay, so, um, I mean, if I just look at the, at the proposal, you know, on the surface, no, just looking at the tables, I mean, it makes sense to me. Right? It's like, well, why not do it? You know, we increase efficiency, we're gonna save electricity, it's gonna pay for itself, you know? Um, so why, and I assume you do this for, for more than just school districts, you know, I mean, any business out there, right?
New Acers County.
Right. So, um, why do people not choose to do this?
Um, well, um.
Well, I mean, if they have enough, if you have the funds you need, I mean, obviously this is a funding making, is the first and foremost. That's why it was put in the legislation, let, the, the legislative section was passed was for, to provide funding to districts. As, as, to not have to always go out of our bond or use their, or just fund it out of their current balance, you know, it is a way to fund. And so if a district has the funding, if it doesn't have a compelling event, what we call a compelling event, which we look at the rooftop units as a compelling event, for example, because there's not funding to do that, then, then you wouldn't pursue, so.
And ultimately, we talked earlier about showing you that this is the best procurement model to do this. Um, looking at the alternative way to replace this lighting and equipment and looking at the performance contract, we've gotten the burden to show you that that's the best way to do it.
So just by quick calculation, I mean, you all really think we can cut our utility spending, our utility cost by twenty-seven percent?
We do.
Mr. Land, do you have any question?
I mean, are you guys done?
Well, I have, I have two later, but go ahead, go ahead.
I got you, I got you. Uh, you know, I hear these numbers and everything's being thrown out. Typically for me is, I'm gonna go with math, I'm saying, okay, you're showing me these, uh, rooftop units right now that are old. And let's say they're electric bill for, for, let's say with this one room, it's running a thousand dollars a year. I mean, that, just in that room a month. And you're telling me that we're gonna put a new unit and it's gonna drop it to five hundred a month. To me, that's, hey, that's a great thing, okay, that unit up there cost, the new unit's gonna cost, uh, twenty thousand to put in. At the end of the day, it's, you know, as a school district, we, we have money that we have to spend, let's be honest, we have to spend this money. At the end of the day, I wanna know that what we're doing is, is gonna save us money at the end of the day. Because the more money we save, the more money we get to put in our classrooms. And that's what's made this district pretty, I mean, pretty good at what we're, what we're doing because of the people that are up here, the people that are over there. And I'm, I'm getting that's what, you know, what, what we're arguing about is here, that we wanna know that in the long run, we're gonna save money and we're gonna put this money back into the classroom. But in the long run, if it's not gonna save us any money at all, then why do it? I mean, but at the end of the day, I mean, we gotta spend the money, but we're trying to do it more efficient that we know that, like you're saying, all right, look, we do this, this is how much money we're gonna save you a year. Great, and that, that's perfect. But at the end of the day, if it's not gonna save us any money, then we're just blowing smoke. And that's what we don't want. I wanna know that this is what we're, this is what you're getting, Mr. Einzen, this is what the school district's getting. We're gonna save you this much money a year by doing what we're gonna do. Because eventually, we're gonna have to do it no matter what. I mean, we're gonna have to, these units are old, we're gonna, Mr. Einzen, we're gonna tell them someday, hey, what's going on at this school? These units are old, guess what, we gotta change them all. And what are we gonna go do? We're gonna go after a contract, we're gonna go find some company that's gonna come and replace all of them. At the end of the day, I guess we're, we're trying to say, well, if it's gonna save us money, these are the units that we need to get and they're at a very well priced that we're gonna make some, you know, we're gonna save some money by getting these units and these lights. Well then, perfect, then we're saving money. Because eventually, we're gonna have to do it. I mean, as a district, we're gonna have to do it. We just wanna know that we're getting a good price, a good deal on our units, our lighting, and it's gonna last us and, because that's, well, that's what you wanna get at the end of the day. It's like he says, I bought flares and lights that said they're gonna last me six years, and they didn't last me six months, you know? It's just the truth. And, uh, that's what we wanna know.
Absolutely, and, and great points, all great points. Once again, that third party reviewer that works for the district is gonna have those answers for you as well. We're gonna make that proposal, all that information goes to him in behalf of the district. And he's gonna have his recommendations. There's gonna be conversations between that third party reviewer and our team to understand the calculations, to understand how everything's being utilized. Because he's gotta make a recommendation back to the district saying, yes, in fact, you're gonna see the savings per their contract. And yes, what they're using is recommended.
And you gotta understand where I'm coming from. It was a few years ago that we decided to, uh, our practice fields, that we decided to go turf on all our schools. And we had to do the math to make sure that it was feasible and that we were gonna save money to the district. You know, we had, uh, who do, I'm, I don't, Mr. Einzen didn't go out there and, and figure out that we were spending almost a hundred thousand dollars a year, ninety-eight thousand dollars a year on maintenance on.
A football field.
A year. Coming out to finding out that it's about three hundred, it costs about three hundred thousand dollars a field to, to turf it. And they would pay for themselves with, you know, each field, we, we placed four, four fields?
Five.
Five fields. And each year alone, each one field was getting paid off by the savings that, because, you know, we're no longer watering, we're no longer cutting grass, we're no longer, you know, so they actually, they've already paid themselves off, right? Correct? They're already paid off, they've paid themselves off by the savings that, uh, on doing that. Is that what we're getting? Is that, is the same, is that the same or is that what we're gonna get?
Yes, and, and so to answer that a couple of ways, I like the question because that is the heart of what we're talking about. The heart of what we're talking about is you're, this is the best procurement model because the guaranteed savings pay for the project. It guarantees what this is all about. So to your, to your point, that's a great question. Um, in this project, probably, even, even more so than, than the example you used, there is first of all, an international protocol that says, this is how you guarantee savings. This is how you reconcile those savings, savings every year compared to the budget. This is how it's done. We follow that protocol. It's not a Johnson Controls method, it's an international protocol. On top of that, we submit our project with that protocol to the third party reviewer to, again, make sure that it's not just us saying it, it's him saying it. And then the third thing I would say on the backside, um, a couple of things. One is, is we look to work with the district to make sure the efficiency is there, the lighting improvements are there, but also to train you on the units to, to do whatever we can to help you out of efficiency in general. One thing I would recommend, and you'll see, I think in your back of your packet, there's some references. Um, another way to make sure when we say the savings are gonna be there, those references, references can vault for us and they can.
You have to understand, us sitting up here, and we, even when we did that, you know, we, you know, you, we got some, you know, we got some black bird, you know, oh, you guys are doing this because it's football. You know, we had literally had to sit down and explain to some people like, this is what we're spending, this is what we're gonna save. And, you know, we had to do it because we, you know, we're held accountable as well to our constituents and, and our stakeholders and, and, you know, when you spend that kind of money, you have to really, this is why we're doing it. It's not because we wanna do it just because, ah, well, we feel like doing it and we have the money. You know, we're doing it because in, in the long run, we're gonna save you tax money. You know, and when we did this, I mean, we had a number of people, we had a number of people that came up, oh, well, you did it because it was football and it's just Texas and it's about football. You know, we literally had to show them the numbers. This is what this field cost us. This is what this field's gonna save us in money after three years. Each field was paid after three years. You know, this field is already paid off, this is how much we're saving now on for the next, for the lifetime. You know, this is what I wanna be able to do if, but essentially because of that, you spent twenty-four million dollars. What is it, how does it help me out in the long run?
And I can tell you that, being in the business of HVAC, I changed out my unit.
And I can tell you that, being in the business of HVAC, I changed out my unit, which is an R twenty-two, seventeen years old. And I'm seeing right now probably about forty-two dollars a month, 'cause I changed it to R four-ten. But having seven hundred eighty-eight units out there, the compressor goes out, it's gonna cost you about two thousand dollars, eighteen hundred dollars with one year warranty. Brand new unit, you're looking at five, six thousand dollars, that's wholesale price with the crane, like you mentioned, everything else. So I could see the benefit on the HVAC side. As far as LED, I did go to Home Depot this weekend, I changed out some lights, I spent over a hundred and twenty dollars. For savings. But I see the expense, I see the expense of front. Because in the long run, we're gonna see a benefit. Especially on the HVAC side, we passed the bomb two thousand and eleven and we changed all the HVAC to a fourteen tier or seventeen tier. But these R twenty-two units, guys, when they go out, they're, they're costly. They don't make them anymore. They're obsolete. And R four-ten, the free-on for R twenty-two is over thirteen hundred dollars. It's expensive. And we sell it. Uh, we just got an increase this morning on, on a R twenty-two free-on. It's, it's expensive. We have dry units that are R twenty-two, but we don't benefit, it's benefits to go with brand new package units and go all four-ten. So I could see the, on the cost savings, I could see the expense, but I see the savings in the long run.
And to your comment, I agree that, that there's gonna be a savings. The issue is, is this the best package to go with and the best option to go with, what, it's what's still lingering in my mind. I have a couple more questions. On, on the fixtures, you're gonna replace a number of light fixtures. We buy, you said you're neutral, you'll buy from different vendors, whatever we're using, those brands or those types, but we buy those through you. Is that correct? Or do we buy those directly? Do we write a check for them or you all buy them and we buy them from you?
We're buying everything from Johnson Controls, it, within that performance contract.
Okay.
For the initial. For the initial construction.
Is your question? Yeah, if you're gonna replace ballast or, or fixtures and so forth, uh, you say, in this school, I wanna replace the lighting fixtures, uh, you assess how many we need. And, and, and you buy them and we buy them from you as part of this contract. Is that correct?
We furnish all the equipment.
You furnish the, the lights.
It's a turn.
I see, okay.
But the specifications can be your specifications, just right.
Right. And, and you have agreement with, uh, vendors that you're gonna buy the lighting fixtures from, okay?
We're not necessarily changing the fixture, retrofitting the fixture.
Okay. So you're gonna, I know there's a little piece that you gotta put in there to accommodate the new light bulbs and so forth.
You know, one of them, they have ballast, then you have LEDs that are basically, they have a driver, so the driver can be outside of the land or can be part of the land.
Okay.
So it just depends on which option.
Great. The third party administrator, who pays him or her?
Y'all.
Just y'all.
So we have to hire somebody to do that, okay?
Because he is representing y'all and he needs to be independent of us.
And you have in fact, did that into the cost?
That is us.
Okay. Okay. Um, in, in reference to, to, to the, to the funding, uh, I, I, I'm still kind of considering that a little bit. You know, um, you mentioned this is, uh, the best funding option for this. But I, I, help me understand that, 'cause I'm not convinced. I, I still think if we're gonna have to go out and take out a twenty-five million dollar loan to do this. And potentially on top of that, pay the ten to fifteen percent fee for y'all to do this, whatever the add-on prices on all this equipment and fixtures, you know, how much more can I save by taking out a twenty-five million dollar loan and we get a contractor to do many of these things as we go in turn? I mean, I, quite frankly, and I'll be honest with Mr. Iantin's staff, has already done a number of these things, uh, to try to improve our, our efficiency on lighting. And so, uh, when you, I, if I heard you correct earlier, you said, this is the best funding option or the best funding issue. Help me understand that, 'cause I, I don't, I'm not sure I fully agree. We can go get a loan for twenty-five million dollars, which may, we may not expend it all. And, and still get this work done, buy the brand new unit, hire a contractor to put them all in, and over a thirteen, fifteen year period of time, we'll show the same savings. Help me understand how this is better.
There's no difference in the contractor you're talking about, the one you hired.
Okay.
We are a construction company.
Okay, okay.
With, with the guaranteed savings.
Okay.
So you're hi- you're hiring a median operations manager, who'll bring project managers.
Okay.
And I, and Johnson Controls, myself, will manage the project. The same thing if you hire Spal Glass or whoever contracts out here, the same thing. It, it, there's the financing side, if maybe we can get a better interest rate, if you have the right person, get you a little bit better interest rate than you could get, maybe, maybe not. Might, you know, all, all that'll be on the table for you to look at.
Okay.
But, uh, so you're, you're hiring Johnson Controls as a general contractor or ABC as a general contractor? But we understand this business and we understand working in schools and working around our schedules. Lot of stuff we'll do, light fixtures we change, we change at night. Air conditioning equipment, we're gonna change that stuff at night. Uh, we wouldn't be doing no crane lifts and stuff. You know, you may have the hot unit that you've got to change during the day. I don't, I don't know what you do as far as a crane, you try to block it off, keep students out of the way.
Right.
We'll do that stuff through, at Canatia, we did all that during the night, we might change fifteen, twenty units on, on school during the night, so there's.
What school district again?
Canatia. Canatia, it's an issue with us, okay? It's inside joke, don't worry about it.
We see the basketball game.
Yeah. Perfect, perfect, that was, you were there.
When you talk about the twenty-five million dollar project, I mean, that, that includes, our fee's not over, over and above that. I mean, that would have to be within that project and, and the interest rate would have to, you know.
At what point do you, at what point do we have a price? Because, uh, this is a proposal. Tomorrow we say, hey, let's do it. You go out and do this assessment and you said, guess what, what you really have is thirty-five million dollars worth of work and your savings is only gonna be one point two million dollars. When do we have a guaranteed price?
So it's one of the reasons we're here.
Right.
I mean, one of the reasons we're here is to get to that le- that level, to get to the design. I mean, this is a preliminary based on, we walked the campuses, we worked with your staff, we brought back the information as we know it. Got the utility bills from your, uh, the utility company with our, what we call an LOA, letter of authorization. Now's the time, if this is to move forward, it goes to that next step, to bring you back that full design that you're looking for. And there's where you have the guaranteed price, the actual savings, the actual scopes, as requested by the staff and even the board in this case.
Well, at this point, obviously, first thing, I'm grateful you came and cleared up some points so we can understand what, if it's gonna move forward, there'll be some purchasing policies we have to follow. There probably would be, uh, some form of a bidding and so forth at that point, but I would just wonder at what point we'd get a price?
Yeah, so, uh, under the, the, the schedule that we put forth, uh, most of the project development is, is approved, was, was to be approved. We're looking at sixty to ninety day development here. So you're looking, you know, sixty to ninety days, we'd be bringing back that information too.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And once again, one to three percent, which is a lot less than, and that's encompassing into the project.
Perfect.
In, in that sixty to ninety days, we'll go through every classroom, every room, count every light fixture. You all, I wouldn't wanna have to open up all day.
Absolutely.
Every light fixture, every, every air conditioning unit, we'd get all in, all that in and forth together, we would sit down with his, his staff. And we'd have all the information, the conditions, the equipment, and he may say, I'm good with this one. But, you know, this one here is five years old, but every month, we got a problem, we got a problem. So I want it to go, maybe keep something else, let that one go. So if the whole list is put together, you're on the side, it's just a big Christmas list, you know, the size of this project.
Well, we can get that.
It's been a fall to that, that point.
Thank you.
This is probably my point though. Next steps, Johnson Controls gets selected, would be the next step, we're gonna move forward.
Sure.
We get a, uh, project development agreement, uh, to go do the design.
Okay.
Ultimately, we'd come back to you with the project we all agree upon. During that development, during that, us coming back to you, there was a lot of great questions today. What's the cost for this? What kind of technology? All of those questions, we're gonna be bringing back to you. I just wanna make sure you understand that before you get to a commitment on that, that project, twenty-four million dollar project, all those questions will be specifically answered along the way.
Usually when I, I go in and, uh, hire someone to, let's say, uh, change the air conditioner or whatever. The contractor is going to charge me, usually it's a general practice, ten to fifteen percent on parts. 'Cause if I, uh, if I'm, uh, I say, well, I'll buy the parts, probably not gonna go, they're going to increase somewhere else. What percentage, since you are going to be handling all the fixtures and stuff like that, would you guys be charging?
So one thing that I do, so, so you go hire a contractor, that contractor say he's gonna hire this air conditioning guy out here. Air conditioning guy wants to furnish the equipment, 'cause he's gonna mark that equipment up and sell it to me and it goes to you. What I do, I don't let him buy that equipment. We have, we're massive, we're all over the world, we have a buying power he doesn't have. So I buy the equipment, so that markup that he puts on it, that savings goes straight to you.
So you do not have a markup for the parts?
We, we, we do have a margin, I said, we have, we have a margin on the total project. Back to what you said, you know, we typically look at a margin here in the ten to fifteen percent range, just where we would be, just like your contract. That we're, you know, we, we're obviously gonna do this, you know, we're gonna, as, as a general contractor, to, to make money. I mean, we're, you know, that, that's, we, we. So that's typically the margin, margin that we would put on too then, so, uh, for the project. By me buying all the equipment, I buy it straight from the, I, I, or straight from the distributor. I do not let the contractor buy it. Say I hire three or four mechanical contractors, you want this project done as well, I, I hire three or four mechanical projects, uh, contractors. They don't buy the equipment and it's marked up to give to me. I buy the equipment, they just furnish the lighting. That way I keep your prices low and low.
And the other practice is that the guy that's going to, uh, put the stuff, usually because he buys in bulk, he gets a percentage off. So the ten to fifteen, you know, is gonna be a little bit rarer for him because.
But you consider what he's buying, what are we, thirty-five million a year? Consider what he's buying, considering what we can buy from this type of projects, all over country, all over the globe, for example.
It's our, it's our buying power. I mean, it's exactly what it is. And then one of the other things, as you were talking about, other contractors. I mean, one of the things that, within this legislation, and Mr. Iantin referred to it early on when he gave, you know, where we were at, how we got to where we're at today, there's no change orders. The legislation, you know, there's no change orders within this unless the district wants us to change something that wasn't in the original scope. When we go do our design and we re- make, bring that design back, we own it. We own every piece of that, every piece of equipment. And if we've missed something, it's on our budget. It's not on your budget. We don't come back to, score ISD said I need a change order, we missed something. We own that.
We, we did twenty-two million, I just finished, we have twenty-two million, uh, uh, hundred thousand dollar change order, 'cause the customer came to us, he said, would you put these drains, some of those lights in and landscape open? Twenty-two million dollars, that was the change order, because they asked for additional work. Only, like, twenty-two million, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Sorry, not, not, not for the gentleman, but it's either for Mr. Ressa or Mr. Iantin. So, I mean, let's say that, that, that we do move forward with something like this, we still have to bid, right? So there's.
I would think we still have to go out and bid, uh, I'd have to talk to our attorney. I still think you still have to have some, there are qualifications to some kind of bid, uh, because you're looking at about twenty-four, twenty-one million dollars. That's my opinion. But again, we'll check with our attorney to make sure that we have to.
Okay.
And second of all, I think that the, uh, the loan that we get will come out of the operating fund, so that would certainly impact through the current budget situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. So there's no further business, views adjourned at seven nineteen. Good evening, good night.